938 Somerset Street LLC, Steve's Home Builders LLC. 2018, Nashville, East St. Louis, Marymount, PA. We're constructing a mixed-use building. We located at 938 Somerset Street, Lot 504, Lot 601, Lot 9, and 10, W. District C2.
Once again, Mr. Chairman, Board Members, James Clarkin for the applicant. This is an application to develop three vacant lots into a mixed-use development with retail on the first floor and three residential apartments on the second floor. The application comes to you with no bulk variances. All of the standards in the zone are met. All setbacks, the coverages, the building height, everything conforms. We do require a modest parking variance. Twenty-three parking stalls are required under your ordinance and 15 bar proposed. We also require a variance for the lack of a loading space, which we would like to solve by virtue of one of the parking spaces being a 15-minute timed parking space, which allows for it to be used as a loading area. We do also have a variance with regard to the number of the side signs, and you'll see that very soon. We have three witnesses this evening. The first one is our architect. The second one will be our engineer, and then finally, we will have a professional planner to justify the variances. Straightforward application, Mr. Chairman, Board Members. Unless you have any initial questions, we'll go right to the first witness. Okay.
Please state your names, call your last name.
William Doran. Last name is D-O-R-A-N.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing about the truth?
I do.
Bill, did you prepare the elevations and floor plans, which were part of the application package?
I did.
Okay. All right. Can you take the board first through the color rendering?
Should we do credentials?
Oh, that'd be a good idea.
I almost got started, then you jumped in.
And I jumped right in. Okay. Licensed architect?
Licensed since 1987.
Were you here before this board previously?
Not the zoning board here in New Brunswick, but a lot of other boards around the state.
Credentials always accepted?
Yes.
Okay. I would offer them up, Mr. Chairman. My apologies.
Thank you.
Take the board through the evaluations, whichever you want to go with first.
As Mr. Clarkin said, we'll go through the floor plans quickly. We have a two-story building, 60 foot by 70 foot. The first floor, we're proposing retail. We have about, we have three units, roughly 1,300 square feet each. On the second floor, we're proposing three apartments, one bedroom apartment at 786 square feet, and a second one with two bedrooms at 1,296 square feet. And then the third unit is a two-bedroom at 1,568 square feet. There'll be a separate entrance in the, well, what is the rear of the building where the parking is. It'll, there'll be a sign out either on the door or next to the door indicating that that's the entrance for the apartments. There'll be an area there for mailboxes as well. The building at its highest point will be 28 foot six high. There'll be a flat roof there. There's a parapet around the building that will hide any HVAC equipment. We've made provisions in the second floor to have a chase come up through one of the apartments so that if we do have a restaurant downstairs, we'll be able to run ductwork and whatnot up through the building, and it'll be, again, hidden on the flat roof.
All right. The plans that you've been referencing, they're exactly the ones that were submitted with the application?
That's correct.
All right. And my understanding would be they don't need to be marked?
They don't.
Okay, wonderful. You do have a color rendering as well?
A1.
A1, please.
So, of course, I got the memo laid on the materials. So, in the rendering, we had, we showed a brick center of the building flanked by stucco sides. We are not going to do the stucco sides. As requested in Mr. Bignell's report, the stucco shown here will be brick to match the center of the building. Upstairs on the second floor, we're suggesting, we're proposing party plank siding with EZAC trim. We will have some stucco trim around the corners of the building and stucco band in the center of the building to separate the main materials. We are, as Mr. Clarkin said, we are looking to, for a variance on signage. We're proposing four signs on the Route 27 side of the building, where one sign, the ordinance allows one sign. It also says we have 24 square foot maximum sign. So, we're going to suggest that we split that up in the three different signs. One sign will be the address of the building, and the other smaller signs will be above the retail areas for each of the retail spaces. We have some goose net lighting that will light them as well.
And the total area of the signs collectively will be 24 feet?
Will bill them 16 square feet.
Anything else?
I don't think so. No.
Okay. He's available for questions.
I'm sorry, may I ask, how many units?
Three, three retail downstairs, three apartments downstairs.
Okay.
Old parking will be on, on these lots?
You'll see that next. Our engineer will take care of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll call Mr. Ron Sadowski.
Please state your names, call your last name.
Ronald Sadowski, S-A-D-O-W-S-K-I.
Can you keep saying one more time? Sorry. Can you repeat?
Repeat.
Repeat your last name, please.
S-A-D-O-W-S-K-I.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing about the truth?
I do.
Please proceed.
Can you give the board the benefit of your education and expertise?
Yes, I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I've appeared before this board several times in the past few years.
And have your credentials been accepted always?
Yes.
Have your credentials changed in any way since you were last accepted?
No.
I would offer them up again, Mr. Chairman, as an expert in the field of engineering. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Did you prepare the site plan drawings, which were part of our submission?
I did.
Okay. Can you give the board the benefit of the location and the size of the property?
Yes, the property is located at the corner of Somerset Street and Henry Avenue. It's 125 feet by 100 feet for a total of 12,500 square feet.
What are the surrounding land uses, Ron?
The surrounding areas are predominantly retail and commercial, with the exception of residential to the south.
Okay. What's on the site today?
It's vacant.
Okay. What does the applicant propose?
He's proposing a two-story building, mixed use, with retail on the first floor and apartment use on the second floor.
Okay. Take the board through, in some detail, please, all these site improvements that are being proposed.
Absolutely. If I may mark this, A1.
Yes.
This is a color rendering of the site plan drawings, which is included in the site plan package.
And the only difference is the colorized portion?
Yes, it's just colors, just landscaping showing, just making it look clear, more clear for the viewer. We have an access drive off of Henry Avenue, two-way access drive. We have 15 parking spaces on the site, six of which will be dedicated to residential and signage. There's an ADA space. There's also a 15-minute signage, there's signage for 15-minute unloading and loading space, which will be used for vans, UPS trucks, FedEx trucks, and the like. We have new LED lighting on the site, both building-mounted and pole-mounted.
And that was one of the comments that we received in the Bignell planning report, correct?
That is correct.
All right. And one of those requests were to reduce the height of the light poles, correct?
That is correct.
And are we in a position that we can do that?
Yes.
All right. And can we then adjust the lights and shield them so that we won't have any spillage and excess of what the ordinance permits?
Yes, yes, we can.
Thank you. Please continue.
We have landscaping along the perimeter of the parking lot, the perimeter of the building, some foundation landscaping, and also street trees along Somerset Street and Henry Avenue.
Can we just stop for a minute on the landscaping?
Yes.
One of the other Bignell planning comments was to extend the landscaping where Lot 11 is?
Yes, this is Lot 11. Lot 11 is the southeast, or I should say, I'm sorry, southwest corner of the property. Currently, we have the landscaping wrapping around the curb. There is a 10-foot to 15-foot space alone, Lot 11, that there is no landscaping, just existing fencing, and we propose to extend that landscaping across that property line.
And if we're fortunate enough to get an approval this evening, we'll put in revised plans, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. How about fencing?
Fencing, there's a, there's existing fencing on the site, and there's also proposed fencing, proposed fencing along the northwest or northeast, I should say, corner of the property behind the proposed dumpster. That's a PVC fence, and also along, around the dumpster is a block wall with a PVC gate with lattice above five feet in height.
Can you point out where the existing fencing is?
Yes, the existing fence is along this property line here, which is the, I want to say, south, along the west, I'm sorry, the east property line as well, and a portion along the southeast.
And all of that fencing is owned by the adjacent properties?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. Please continue.
We are proposing a two, an enclosed dumpster area for two dumpsters for both trash and recycling. It'll be gated, it'll be screened around the perimeter. We have sidewalk connecting Henry Avenue to the building. There's currently sidewalk along Somerset Street, so, and there's also going to be sidewalk along the rear of the building, connecting the building to the parking lot.
All right. Have you had an opportunity to review the Bignell planning report dated January 8 of 2019?
I have.
Once again, Mr. Chairman, Board Members, it's Paragraph 10 again, it's on Page 3, and we would like to concentrate on those. And if we have overlooked anything before that, we can double back if Todd's so requests. So, Item A, as it customarily is, is a request that we obtain all of the necessary governmental approvals, and we would, of course, agree to that.
Yes.
Item B, the residential entry should be marked on the door of the building, and you have Mr. Doran's testimony, and he'll take care of that issue for you. With regard to Item C, provide a secure space on the building for mail delivery. Bill, did you address that directly? Okay. All right, fine. Hopefully to the board's satisfaction. Item D will be handled in testimony by the planner. Item E, request the elimination of the stucco and vinyl siding, and we've agreed to do that. Item F, we've discussed the location of the HVAC units, and with respect to cooking vents, we have the testimony from Mr. Duran about the chase, and any other equipment would be on the roof, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Location of all gas and electric meters?
The gas and electric meters, if I'm correct, are located on the easterly portion of the building, which is adjacent to a parking lot now. So, it'd be away from, view from both Henry Avenue, Somerset Street, and the residential apartments.
Item H requires us, or requests us, to give details of the fencing, and we would add that to the detail sheet?
I will.
All righty. Item I, replacement trees are required, and to the extent that we cannot put them on the site, we will agree to comply with the city's ordinance and make the appropriate monetary compensation. The site plan should show the location of all utility poles. We're on Item J now.
Yes.
Can we do that, Ron?
Yes.
Okay. Item K asks us to change the height and the location on center of the plantings. Can we comply with that request? Item L is the loading, and we hope to accomplish that with the 15-minute parking stall. Item M, the applicant should screen and buffer the parking lot from Lot 11. Would you like to just review again?
Yes.
What that screening and landscaping is?
Yes, there's a row of cypress along the residential property line that ends approximately 15 feet prior to the termination of the residential property. So, we will extend that and possibly add several more plantings within this item here as well.
Item N requires us to do the calculations for the side side area, and we will definitely do that. Item O, on the light spillage, all right, we've already discussed that we're going to lower the height of the poles.
Yes.
And you're also going to use shields?
Yes.
All right. And can we comply with the city's ordinance with regard to light nuisance?
Yes.
Okay. And Item P, Mr. Chair, Board Members, request of the colored architectural elevations, and those have been provided. It has been provided. Have you had an opportunity to review the Delaware Raritan Report dated November 20?
Yes, I have.
2000, oh, no, we've got an updated one, it's January.
Yeah, January of 2008, yes.
All right. Are there any items in that report that the applicant cannot comply with?
No.
All right. Are there any issues that require any discussion with the board?
The only issue was, I believe, that Engineer Carley wanted me to describe the site in general and how we complied with the city standards. The size of the property and the impervious coverage, impervious coverage is less than a quarter of an acre. The disturbance on the property is less than one acre, so we do not meet the state regulations for stormwater management. We're considered a minor application in term, or minor development in terms of stormwater management. So, I designed the site for overland flow without detention to go through the parking lot and out to Henry Street, Henry Avenue. Henry Avenue has a high point, I want to say about 75 feet from the intersection of Somerset Street. So, any water that enters the parking lot will exit Henry Avenue and then to the existing stormwater system to the south. If I may, at this time, though, there was a comment about us tying directly into the storm inlet on Somerset Street, which may, which will likely require DOT approval and possibly cause the project to be delayed because of the time that it takes. Would it be possible to have the, because it's a parapet roof, have the stormwater or the runoff from the roofs drain underneath the sidewalk to the curb and also continue into the parking lot like the rest of the site?
I would say, Mr. Chair, right now, you have, the property's a lawn area, and it would be, the proposal has become emotionally impervious, and so I like that you were capturing the drainage from the building and routing it to the inlet there. That shouldn't be the end of the world, you know, drainage from the.
Okay, no, this is.
You know, I would say, make your, make your best effort at that.
Okay.
Because overland flow in the winter time is.
Yeah.
Not optimal.
Yep, yep.
That's my thought.
Any other issues you could call in that we haven't addressed?
Just really, really quickly, the sidewalk in the lower left-hand corner of the drawing of Somerset Street?
Right.
It, for lack of a better word, the technical term, I guess, is wiggles.
Yeah.
Onto your property.
Yes.
You're either going to want to establish easement for that or move it off of your property.
Well, I believe we're going to have to go to the county.
The county.
Trustee.
The state.
Yeah, so, you know, you have a piece of sidewalk on your property. I'm sure you don't want that, but it's there.
Can you relocate it?
We have the room to do it, yes.
We have the room to do it.
Well, you know, why it was laid out like that and put in like that is a.
Yeah.
Well, the license is there.
So, if we relocate it, that would be acceptable? All right, let's double back to the loading issue. We anticipate three small retail stores of about 1,300 square feet each, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. What would be the most common type of delivery vehicle that would service these kinds of small retail stores?
It would be a van or a box truck, similar to like a UPS truck or a FedEx truck, something small like that.
All right. And would these fit into a traditional parking stall that we have laid out?
Yes, we have the stall next to the Viper X, so there's extra space for that.
But we, why did that one stall?
We could, yes.
All right. And that, we would sign that as a 15-minute parking space?
That is correct.
All right. And how will the parking spaces be allocated?
There are six spaces along the back of the property that will have signage designated that it's for residents only, for the three apartments, which will meet the RSI standards. We need six parking spaces for residential, and the remaining nine will be for the retail.
Okay. So, the variance that we need is for these spaces to service the retail stores?
That is correct.
Okay. Is this an area where some of the population will tend to walk through the proposed retail stations?
Yes.
Are there also hot-street park available along Henry Avenue?
There is.
All right. In front of, in front of this particular lot, how many hot-street park spaces are there?
From the proposed access to Somerset Street, three, three parking spaces.
Now, this is a proposed mixed-use building, so what we're suggesting is a shared parking arrangement, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Now, I realize you're not a planner, but do you have any experience with these shared parking arrangements?
Yes.
Okay. And have they been workable after you have testified that it will work, the project's been built, and then it operates? Has the shared parking arrangement worked in?
Yes.
That's all I have of this witness, Jim. He's available for questions.
With respect to the loading space, is it dedicated for loading? Because I'm hearing 15 minutes, and I'm hearing.
The answer is, it's not dedicated for loading. The loading is something that happens just occasionally. The idea behind the 15-minute is to kind of discourage people from using it if they're only going to, because they're tending to be there more than 15 minutes. Our hope is that it keeps the space open. I can do it, we can do it, but we would then lose another parking space.
So, we haven't identified the nature of the tenancy at this point in time. So, I think I heard somebody say that, you know, perhaps it's possible this could be used as a restaurant, maybe two, maybe three. I mean, clearly, if you're talking about, you know, restaurants, sort of, that, talking about a lot of traffic, talking about a lot of mean parking, eight spots shared across three retail spots, retail spaces, I just don't see how it's happening in any way.
Because it's a restaurant.
I think if it's possible to be a restaurant, I'm super trying to tease out what could potentially be the worst-case scenario, not saying that that is the outcome, but certainly from my perspective, let's say two, let's say it's one. How many, how many people sit in that restaurant? How many people are expected to arrive? I have automobile, our residence disposal, what happens to visitors or residents who come? Where are they going to park? I just see a.
All right. The shared, the shared parking arrangement is one where, because the residents go to work, okay, and a lot of them work from 9 to 5, although a lot of us have different work hours, that frees up spaces, all right, so that they're available, okay, for, for the commercial people. Now, we talked about taking the six spaces for the residential and dedicating them, but we would only dedicate them, all right, during particular hours. They have to be open, all right, during the daytime for these people who are going to use the retail stores.
Which might be acceptable if the bulk of utilization of retail stores curves during the day, when most people probably are at work, but at night.
Give me one second. That's an easy one. No restaurants. Because you make a good point, and, and those restaurants, you know, tend to be later and draw more people. So, we want to take the restaurants out of the equation.
Mr. Chairman, if I just clarify on that item, the city's definition of restaurant is pretty broad, so that definition of restaurant includes something like a deli or sandwich shop or coffee shop or a donut shop or, I mean, it's really not relative to what type of food you serve. It's almost any type of food service, regardless of whether it's sandwiches or, if it's a restaurant.
I am cognizant of the broad expanse of the definition of restaurant.
Okay.
And it's purposeful on our part, okay, that it's any type of food service or eating under the ordinance.
Right, so coffee shop, that's a restaurant.
Correct.
Clear about that. Okay. So, you agree with.
Move to the next witness?
Yep.
We'll call our planner.
Hi, James Clarkin, fourth, C-L-R-K-I-N.
Do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing about the truth?
I do.
Please proceed.
Can you give the board the benefit of your education and experience, please?
Sure. I am a licensed professional planner with the state of New Jersey. I received my undergraduate degree from George Washington University. Graduated from Rutgers Blasting across the street. In 2013, I received my planning degree. I was employed with CME Associates as a planner for about five years, and now doing some planning work on my own. I have testified before various zoning and planning boards throughout the state, both testifying for applicants and also on behalf of boards across the state.
And have your credentials as a planner always been accepted?
They have.
And for transparency, members of the board, he is my son.
It's all right.
Requested and been accepted. Thank you very much. Have you visited the subject property?
Yes, I did.
Have you also toured the immediate and surrounding neighborhood?
I have.
Have you reviewed the engineering drawings, which are part of the application?
I had opportunity to do so.
And have you reviewed the city's parking ordinance and its master plan?
I have.
And what was the purpose for which you performed all of this diligence?
All of that analysis was to see if a parking variance could be justified, and in my professional opinion, it can.
Have you listened to Mr. Sadowski's testimony this evening about the shared parking arrangement?
I have.
Okay. And have you reviewed shared parking arrangements proposed by applicants in the past when you represented the university municipalities?
Yes, I have for several projects.
All right. Can you briefly explain the shared parking approach and why it's workable?
So, as was talked upon in previous testimony, the idea is that you have multiple uses using one parking lot, and the shared parking approach basically takes advantage of changing parking, parking demand throughout the day. So, as was alluded to before, residences are at work during the day, so that frees up spaces for the other use. Ultimately, circumstances do change throughout the day and the night, so weekends are a little bit different, weeknights are a little bit different, but ultimately, we feel that both uses can have enough spots to coexist together at any given point in time.
Has the shared parking arrangement been recognized in the state residential site approval standards?
It has. RSI states that a residential project that has a mixed-use approach. It has. RSI states that a residential project that has a mixed-use approach can use the shared parking approach, and as you probably know, a shared parking approach or methodology is outlined in your zoning ordinance.
From a planning perspective, can this parking variance be justified?
Yes, under what the planners call a C2 variance or a flexible variance.
First, could you please explain how that analysis is supposed to be undertaken?
Excuse me, analysis, yes. So first, we identify what benefits typically positively run for the city if variances were to be granted, and then also, by the same token, look at any possible detriments if the variance were granted, and then you weigh the positive and the negative.
All right, what benefits to this city do you see if this parking variance were granted?
So we will be taking a vacant, underutilized property and putting it into a productive use. I also see that'll further multiple goals of the peaceful land use law, most notably A, to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in a manner that promotes public health, safety, morals, and general welfare, also Item C or Goal C, to provide light air and open space. E, ECHO, promote the establishment of appropriate population densities that contributes to the well-being of persons in the neighborhood, and finally, I promoting a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques.
Well, another benefit being the fact that this is a conformal use, that there are no goal variances.
That is correct, and I would also add that I feel the residences above would help keep the retail viable.
Do you see any detriment from granting this parking variance?
No, I do not. I believe the shared parking arrangement is definitely a workable solution as it's been shown throughout the state in hundreds of cases.
And you also heard Mr. Sedowski's testimony that we also have the ability to utilize three on-street parking spaces along our frontage on Henry Avenue, correct?
Yes, so in my opinion, that would reduce the deficit from eight to five.
All right, when you take the benefits from this application, okay, and you don't believe there's any detriment, what is your ultimate conclusion?
My ultimate conclusion is that the positive substantial... positive benefits substantially outweigh any negative detriments.
Are there only any goals and objectives of the city's master plan that would be further by improving the application?
Yes, after my review of the city's master plan, I came to the conclusion that three goals and objectives would be further by this application. The first would be a vision goal that states new residential, commercial, and mixed-use neighborhoods are able to replace the city's underutilized properties. As I said before, it's vacant, underutilized, so I think this project would further that goal. Additionally, there's a land use goal that states, or proposes to increase residential infill at housing densities appropriate to the existing neighborhood. I believe that this project would fit in nicely, given the residential mix of residential densities currently along Henry Avenue. And then finally, there is a land use goal that says to reuse vacant and abandoned sites, which this project accomplishes.
All right, let's come to the negative criteria. First, do you have an opinion whether the parking variance can be granted without any substantial detriment to the public good?
Yes, it can be granted without any substantial detriment to the public good. I don't see any detriment at all because the shared parking approach, as I said before, does work in hundreds of cases throughout the state.
And because if you utilize the three on-street spaces, our deficit is further reduced, correct?
Correct.
Do you have an opinion whether or not there would be any substantial impairment to the intent purpose of the city's zoning ordinance by granting this parking variance?
Yes, from an operational perspective, we have sufficient parking, and so we are meeting the intent of the ordinance, which is to provide sufficient parking for the uses.
All right, there are two other variances for loading zone and number of facade signs, correct?
That is correct, yes.
And these variances also be granted under the flexible C2 analysis?
Yes, they can.
Do you see any detriments to the public good of the zone plan if those other two variances are granted?
No, I do not.
All right. Do the benefits of this overall project substantially outweigh any detriment from granting these other variances?
Yes, absolutely, in my professional opinion.
That concludes this direct question. One is available for questions.
You're edging on the use of the three on-street. Is there... what's the current use, or do you have any idea of its current use, or...
For the on-street parking?
Yeah.
So when I visited the site today, all three were vacant. Looking at some of the residences, there were... I couldn't tell if they're townhouses connected or just really single families on smaller lots, but some of them had driveways, some did not, so I saw that some of the spaces were utilized by the, what I'm assuming, the tenants and then the apartment block. It seemed like they had some parking spaces as well, but as I said, with... so when you're looking, so you can't park close to the stop sign, but right along here and the two on the other side, they were open and they were utilized.
Did you do any disanality while school was in?
I did not. I was not able to get to the site while school was in. I did notice some students walking home, so I was there around four thirty, five o'clock. So the answer to your question is now, is there a follow-up question today? Oh, just...
When you've got a bunch of college kids with cars and no place to park, they tend to park.
Got you. I thought you were alluding to the high school. So I'm not quite sure I follow your... there is your question.
I mean, there's a parking situation in front of you.
Yes.
I mean, there just is. Everyone knows this, and there's nothing we can do about it, but you really have to give it some thought.
Yes. In terms of college students, I would say, you know, class times vary widely, you know, so whether I was there during specific hours, I don't think that would offer any conclusive evidence that the on-street parking spaces wouldn't be available.
These folks that are renting these units are essentially renting a parking space also. Is that part of...
If they're... if the signage will be dedicated to this parking space, yes. I don't know if that's built into a price or not.
Is the question whether or not we're gonna charge for it?
Yeah. Is the... I mean, again, the folks who are residents here, are they essentially part of their rent is to...
Do they have a dedicated space in the lease agreement? Is that envisioned?
It's certainly envisioned that they will have a dedicated space during the particular times, and we can talk about that if we need to fashion something really detailed. But, you know, they're basically, you know, from five o'clock at night, okay, until, you know, the next morning, those are dedicated spaces. And the answer is yes, we would put that in a lease agreement. Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Jim, this is just gonna muddy things up. The board should know of this information about it. There is probably the weirdest parking sign I've ever seen in front of this property and across the street. So there's no parking eight thirty a.m. to ten thirty a.m., April first to October thirty first.
Street claim.
But that brings up another question. Is this in any way related to permit parking by board on the street, right? Because I know that where I live, it says permit only, and if you're... if you don't have a permit, how'd you go? So that would potentially render the on-street elements.
There's no signage for permit parking?
Yeah, on the street.
On the street, perfect. Okay, and I'm gonna recall Mr. Sedowski on the issue. Were we able to confirm that?
No, we were just looking at the sign that...
Oh, okay, just looking at the weird sign.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Google Maps.
Yes, they're wonderful. Unless there are any further questions to this witness, I want to recall Mr. Sedowski for now. Ryan, you've visited the site a number of times?
Yes.
Can you tell me exactly approximately on that?
Three or four times.
Okay. Can you tell the board what your observations were about parking on Henry Avenue during the time that you visited the site?
Yes, the three to four times, I don't know exactly which number it was, and it was always during the week, midday, early afternoon. I want to say that the parking, the occupied parking on Henry Street was about thirty percent, thirty-five percent. So there was ample parking, especially along this property.
And those were various times during the day?
Yeah, various times, probably between ten o'clock in the morning to one thirty, two o'clock in the afternoon.
And I suspect that the people that are still here, because I think we're the only true application left, but we're gonna get some comments from the residents, and we'll have a further discussion about parking. And that concludes our direct case for now.
Public comment? Anyone who wishes to speak? Please answer any question.
Please state your name, spell your last name.
Name, last name, A-R-R-I-E-T-A.
TTA?
No, two R and one T. A-R-R-I-E-T-A, Arrieta.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing about the truth?
Yes, I do. Okay, and the neighbor right here, this is my house, and I have like a three or four concerns about this business. Looks very nice. I would be so happy because now I have this empty land that constantly I have to call the owner to cut the grass. There is a lot of animals over there. Now it'd be a forest. That would be beautiful, but I have another concerns. First is the traffic that will be generated in our neighborhood. Behind, it is my first... my house is the first one. Across the street in Henry Avenue and all these houses over here is only residential area. It's no commercial. The traffic in this corner where it is Franklin Boulevard and Route twenty-seven is very bad. You can go to the records, and in the year, we have been there for fifteen years or longer, in the year, three or four times or more in a year, the traffic light right here went down. They always have to replace the traffic light because of the traffic in that area. That means that even us, when we came from Franklin Boulevard to our house, I never make a right and a left, and that's what the people we should do, they would do to enter here in the parking lot, because it's very hard and there is a lot of traffic on Route twenty-seven thousand. And this is very close, this intersection is very close to Henry Avenue, with the traffic light on Henry Avenue. If you stop here to make a left, you will have a traffic accident. Then what we do is we'll go here for Oliver, all around, and go to our houses. That's what most of the people we do, right, to enter here. Talking about parking...
I'm sorry, which street did you say?
Henry Avenue. Oliver, Oliver, that is the other one. Franklin Boulevard became in Oliver, Oliver. Then my other concern is the traffic in the area, the parking lots. Like you said, we have that problem that we have to be changing the cars during April to October, April to October, like a six month in a year. It's on one side or in the other side. When this contest was developed, was a families, and it's still a family, same guy, but most of us have little children fifteen years ago. Now my children, that they were children, they have children, and that happened to most of the neighbors over here. That means that at the beginning, we have only two cars, and we have a space in my parking lot over here in from my house. Nowadays, we have four cars in my house, and when we have a visitor, we have five or six visitors from the family, no paying, no paying, and that happened to all my neighbors. We don't have a space where to park. If you go now, right now, over there, you will see one of my cars parking here, because we don't have a space, and that happened to most of the neighbors. Across the street from mine is the same. It's all the block. They are like a townhouses. House close to the other one, they don't have a space where to park, like everybody from the other corner come here to park, plus the people that is a building, three store, three store building, two buildings, that they don't have a space enough in the back to park neither, and they come and park over here in the other side. Then I don't see that we have a space enough for the parking lot. Yes, during the day, ten o'clock, one o'clock, same guy, we have a job, we are working, but after four o'clock, everybody come back home, most of the people, and all this is full, plus the inconvenience that is one side or the other side, six month in a year. My personal concern for the constructors, for the company, I'm concerned about this parking lot and my fence. Is there a sidewalk or something in between? Because I'm concerned that the people can park over here and hit my fence and go even in my backyard where my granddores are playing over there or something.
Wheel stops?
Sorry?
Wheel stops?
Wheel stops?
All right.
Stops, yeah, sure.
I just wanted to see if this was involved. We'll address the concerns.
Just for a point, question for our professionals. The... if that street became resident-only parking, that... is that something that the board has the authority to implement as a condition on the neighborhood?
Do you want to address it?
Sure. Well, what's happened in the past is that applicants have waived the ability for the residents to purchase on-street parking permits. I think in this situation, it's a bit of a square peg in a round hole, because now you have dedicated on-site spots for the residents for certain hours of the day, and really, the question is gonna be, when those residents leave those spots, presumably to go to work in the morning, is there gonna be enough remaining spots throughout the day to service the ground floor users?
Right, yep.
So the overflow, if that lot fills up, is really gonna flow onto the street and become street parking. So residential permit... we're not talking about residential permit holders. We're talking about customers, shoppers.
Yes.
So I'm not sure if a waiver of those residential permit, you know, or the, you know, prohibition to do that would be effective.
For the residents.
But then the people that are in the apartment, right, so...
Yeah, of course, people, the...
So I don't know that that does, I mean, that really... well, that's not...
Usually, the situation is when you have like an apartment building, we're really in the R5, R5 out behind College Ave Gym or something like that, where it's... we're trying to not overwhelm an already difficult situation. I'm not sure if this fits into that practice very well.
Yes, I have another concern about the business that will be running there. I almost sure, but I want to bring this to the community. I almost sure that the town will not allow to have over there like a liquor store or something like that, right? Or is the possibility that would be a liquor store there close to the high school or to our neighborhood?
I think that pulls up the state's curfew for licensing.
The licensing would fall to the state. However, the... they could have any retail business that's permitted. Retail is permitted in that area.
It's something that, of course, we will not like in our neighborhood, but... And about to use the space, we would prefer to have a green area. It's all, everything is building, building, buildings, business, business, business. We would prefer to have a park over there for our children in the block in our neighborhood, that they don't have any. Green area in the wrong.
Any other public comment? Feel free to.
Could I speak from here?
No, we need you to come forward and say your name, sorry.
My name is Ernest Harrison. I'm a digger at NBL Christian Church. In that area where you...
Excuse me, sir.
I'm sorry.
Do you swear or affirm...
Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing about the truth?
Yes.
You may proceed.
You can have a seat, it's easy for you, you don't have to stand. You don't have to stand.
Okay, okay, I'm good. In that area, when the portable homes was built a few years ago, there was told to be a water system under there, you know, to catch the water, but it wasn't. In that area now, when the big rains come, it floods out.
Mm-hmm.
It floods out, am I right?
Yes, yes.
Because when they built a portable home, they didn't put the water system in there, you know? So now, big rains come, it floods out in there, and there is no parking in there, believe me. You build something out there, there's nowhere to park anymore, you know?
So where is the flood in here, we talked about? Where is the flood?
On Sunset Street, on Oliver Street.
On Sunset?
Yeah. No, New Brunswick, it's New Brunswick area.
Yeah.
It's New Brunswick area, on Oliver Street, right on the corner there.
Thank you very much, sir.
Oh, do I just be sworn in again?
Yes, please.
Charles Catovil, K-R-A-T-O-V-I-L.
You swear to tell the whole truth and nothing about the truth?
Yes, sir. Good evening once again. Just in light of the testimony tonight, would the applicant be willing to waive the ability for future tenants to get permit parking if permit parking were to ever exist there? Because it sounds like there is a parking issue there. I know it might be a little bit uncharted, but would that be something the applicant would be willing to waive? Since they do have their own lot and do have, you know, a...
Just follow what we heard. I mean, from my perspective, honestly, the applicant would answer for themselves, but it doesn't sound like that actually alleviates the situation based upon current configuration.
And the commercial?
Yes, the commercial.
Right, yeah, I mean, if there are lawful uses in the retail space, there's going to be somewhere.
Sure, sure, but I mean, thanks to your great questioning, now we have a commitment that there won't be restaurants of any kind, and so it's highly likely that the peak times for the commercial will be during the day, and that folks who live there will probably be able to find a spot and then get home. And then, you know, obviously, when they wake up, their car will still be there, and they can keep their spot as long as they want until they head to work or go do whatever they got to do. So the residents of this building probably will be able to have spots. So should one day Henry Avenue become permit parking, would these, would the tenants of these apartments, should they be able to get in on that? Or should they just use the, it's just a thought. I mean, I don't, I don't think that's...
We would waive any permit parking if it ever became. Is that an enforceable contingent condition?
Well, you know, one of the problems with trying to enforce it is we could certainly make a condition on a resolution of approval. However, knowing the parking or conditions, the permits is going to look at conditions of the approval five, 10, 15 years from now. If the applicant is voluntarily waiving it, he would make it a condition that would be restricted by deed. It would be, in addition to the resolution, it would also be in a deed, so, and make it also part of the leases for the commercial properties and the residential properties. Nothing is fail-proof?
Of course.
But at least we'd have three methods.
And I would agree with all three. And just as an aside, you know, we have done the waiver of permit parking in at least 10, 12 cases I can think of, I think. So it's something that we've done routinely, and we would do it again, and we would do it also by deed restriction.
That's all I have, I just say take into account what the residents are saying. Thank you.
I have a, I have some final comments now.
Sure.
I mean, the issue is the parking, plain and simple. The first member of the public who came up to testify indicated that her concern was the time of day, was after 4:00. And that's when our parking demand will be at its least, because that's when the residential, I'm sorry, strike that, when the retail stores are going to be emptying out. So I really think that we have a situation where you have testimony from Mr. Sadowski at only 30 to 35%, and that was during the day, and that's the time when we're going to have, you know, the retail stores. This city has, in the past, recognized a couple of different factors when it comes to parking. One of them is that people don't always drive to the location where they are going, they walk to it. We have a pattern in this city of granting parking variances on a regular basis, where the testimony is such that you have a shared parking situation. I'm not asking you this evening to go into uncharted territory, I'm asking you simply to continue the practice that this city has engaged in for a couple of decades. I think you need to look at the overall benefits of this project, and those are outlined to you. We've got a foul piece of property sitting there, and it's sat there for a long time, and we're putting it to productive use, we're strengthening the city's tax basis. It's an appropriate population density, given the testimony with respect to the other residential uses that are nearby. If you have some additional concerns about the parking, I'm open to any type of suggestion in order to give you a greater comfort level than you might have right now. Thank you.
So Chairman, I'd simply go on the record in saying that, you know, I appreciate all of the concessions that the applicant has made with respect to this. I think you've been extremely reasonable with regards to what's been requested here. As a resident of the city, as I believe we all are, I'm extremely sensitive to the demands of parking and traffic and the impact that it has on established neighborhoods and the potential detriment that it can have. I'm also very appreciative of the fact that developing unutilized land is a preeminent goal for this city, and I really like the attractive approach that's been taken, and again, the concessions that have been made with respect to the first floor utilization. So this, from my perspective, is one of the more difficult applications that I'd like to consider, so thank you for making it difficult versus just a straight out now. Thank you.
I appreciate the architecture of the building. It's nice to see something that has character, and I appreciate the fact that you didn't come in and want to put a huge structure on a piece of property where it didn't belong. I also think that it will beautify the area on a piece of property that's underutilized. And I'm, I mean, I'm sensitive to the parking issue as well, but we need to progress sometimes with certain things and compromise in some ways, and I think that you are making compromises by agreeing to certain things that would be for you.
Just, I'll, in final comments before the nomination, I think this will probably, if approved, would be the most attractive building in that 27 corridor there, so I applaud the architectural components that you've put into this, and I thank you for listening to the residents and being willing to compromise to their concerns. If a, anybody want to make a motion? Do you want to read the conditions first? I'm sorry.
Certainly. So the board acted favorably, recommended conditions, made it clean, compliance with the terms of the DNR engineering report dated January 11, 2019, submission of all necessary easements and/or cross-access agreements for review and approval by this board attorney and city engineer, payment of a site performance bond in an amount reviewed and approved by the city engineer, submission of a site inspection escrow deposit for engineering inspection fees, payment of all water and sewer connection fees, issuance of a road opening permit from the city engineer if required, compliance with the terms of the Bignell Planning Report dated January 8, 2019, monetary contribution to the city's tree preservation trust fund in an amount to be determined by the technical advisory committee, planning review escrow funded for all anticipated post-approval reviews, payment of all outstanding taxes and/or water sewer fees to the city, approval or waiver of the Middlesex County Planning Board, Frehholdt Soil Conservation District approval or waiver, all utilities and other site improvements to be maintained by the applicant at their sole expense, all onsite utilities to be constructed underground, all temporary encroachments into the public right-of-way shall require city council approval, all construction staging shall be done onsite unless an encroachment allowing into the public right-of-way is approved by the city council, streets shall be kept clean of sediment and debris, the applicant shall cause the streets to be cleaned if directed to do so by the director of public words, tracking pads shall be installed at all construction exits, replacement of damaged streets, curbs, and sidewalks as per the direction of the city engineer. The two additional, or three additional conditions that the board discussed was filing of a deed restriction to prohibit residents from purchasing permit parking if Henry Street becomes a permit parking street. And a redundant one to that is also voluntary waiver of the right for occupants of the subject development to obtain residential on-street parking permits. Where businesses in here, I'm just going to cross that out, because your discussion was residential.
We also have the condition about no restaurants.
Yes, and no restaurant uses shall be permitted in the building.
And we're going to relocate the sidewalk, and I don't know, did Todd capture everything from your perspective?
Edet, it'll be by deed restriction and also by at least restriction on leases.
Yes.
And the three items of relief that are being requested for the board to consider is a variance for the number of parking spaces, a variance for the number of signs, and a variance for the loading space.
The nomination?
Both until approved, first on the conditions.
I'll circle. Suzanne Ludwig?
Yes.
Mel Castaneda?
Yes.
Bob Kertika?
Yes.
John Pachalino?
Yes.
Dale Vickers?
Yes.
Yelitchechko?
Yes.
Jeff Crum?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We'll continue to work with you, stay up.